Good evening. I'd like to start our open study session. This is the audit report from Plant Moran. Before we begin, I'd like to apologize. This study session was originally scheduled for last Wednesday. Council unanimously agreed to postpone the study session until today. Due to the fact that there was no one here to record it for the public, we felt it was important for our residents to be able to see the results of our yearly audit by Plant Moran. At this point, I'd like to begin it.
I don't have one.
I don't have it either. I left it in my car.
Tom with the blue one? Alicia, Tom with the blue one, right? Yeah. We can share. Okay, we'll share this one.
Go ahead. I'll look at you guys.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It's always a pleasure to be here. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve the City of Dearborn Heights. As the council chairwoman just mentioned, we did complete the city's audit for the fiscal year ended 2019. And so we're here to share the audit results. We have several items we'd like to cover with the council today that were distributed, I understand, last week and maybe, I apologize, didn't consider bringing them again. So hopefully, we can follow along here. The financial report would be the thicker document that you received. It's a very long report, as you're aware. And so in order to cover some of the highlights from there, we put together the slide presentation that Nicolette's pulling up now and that some of you have in front of you. Maybe a couple of just highlights while Nikki is getting that up on the screen. So you did receive, the city received an unqualified opinion or an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance you should get. It's what you should expect from your team. And it basically means that our audit opinion is without exception and that the financial statements can be relied upon for your use and for all users. In general, we will go over our findings. But we are encouraged because we're starting to see some progress. There's been a lot of transition within the finance department over the past several years. And so I've been at this meeting where there's been discussions about recurring findings and how and when those are being addressed. And so we are encouraged to see some of that being improved and that the team kind of stabilizing, having the same folks in place. We're also encouraged by the ongoing results in the general fund and seeing the city making progress with rebuilding your fund balance. As with your neighbors, you're not out of the woods yet. There's a lot to be done. There's a lot of deferred maintenance, legacy costs. You're dealing with whatever other community is dealing with. And so on balance, I think our report is that, kudos to the team for having a strong year, for making some improvements. But caution to everyone that there's still a lot of work to be done and that there will be some financial challenges for the city ahead, as there will be and continues to be with many local communities. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Nicolette to cover the slides now that we have those ready to go. And then following the slides, she'll go ahead and cover the single audit report, which is the results of both our federal awards audit and our financial statement audit.
Hi. So as Alicia mentioned, the graph package is used to highlight some of the key financial items from the statements. So we're not going through all 100 pages of the report. So the first slide, this shows a five-year trend of corporate fund revenue. So revenue has remained relatively consistent, increasing from prior year about 2.2 million. Property taxes do comprise the city's most significant portion of corporate fund revenue at 55%. Millage rates this year did decrease slightly, but your taxable value was up. Charges for services line, that's down primarily due to rescue runs. And then licenses and permits, that category. Building permits were up this year about $100,000. The other revenue, that increase is due largely to the MMRMA reimbursement. The next slide, this is used to illustrate the decline and the slow increase in taxable values. So since 2013, the city has begun to see those taxable values coming back up. But it will take a while to get where you were pre-2009.
Nicole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abella?
Got a question for you. So on this one here with the proposal A, obviously, there's a cap at 5% per year. It's almost never going to get us back to where we were before. When it's over 5%, you're still going to use, obviously, the lower number that we are allotted. Is that correct?
Right. You are capped. But the trend is slowly increasing.
But it will never increase more than 5% per year?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's the lower of 5% or inflation.
Or inflation.
So it's actually been well below 5%.
Yep.
Because inflation's been so low.
Okay. Thank you.
This next slide is used to illustrate the historical trend of state shared revenue. So state shared revenue payments do make up the city's second largest source of revenue. And since 2014, this revenue has been increasing. And for fiscal year '20, it's expected to increase again based on the governor's budget recommendation. Slide five, this shows a five-year trend of corporate fund expenses. So in total, expenses increased approximately $4 million from last year. Public safety, that category, did increase about $1 million due to an increase in capital purchases. There's an ambulance and other vehicles. And then the general government category, that increase was primarily due to the final payment on the Warren Valley Golf Course. Slide six, so when we look at the health of a fund, we often use the guideline of the ratio of unassigned fund balance and assigned, so what's truly available to spend, compared to your total annual expenditures. And so 15% to 30% is often the measure that's cited, but obviously will differ based on each community's needs and strategic plan. So this slide does show the past seven years of that ratio, which has been improving each year. And so for the year ended 6/30/19, the city is at 14%. So right in the middle of that range that's provided. Slide seven, so this shows the five-year trend of the corporate funds' fund balance components. So non-spendable is related to prepaid, where the cash has already left the city. The restricted fund balance can only be used for certain purposes based on the source of that revenue. But assigned and unassigned, like we saw on the previous slide, is the fund balance that's truly available for city use.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abella?
So Nicole, I had a question for you. On the previous page, you had on there the fund balance at 6.802 million. And then on the next one here, this one says 10.379 million. Both of them for 2019. What is the difference in that? What are we missing out on? Why is there such a gap there? And what's the difference between the two?
So the 6.8 is what is assigned. So it's not restricted, it's not spendable, and it hasn't been assigned. The 6.8 is the unassigned, and then you're assigned. So if you look at your financial statements, $2 million has been assigned for retiree healthcare. So you're saying of our fund balance pot, we've earmarked $2 million for retiree healthcare.
Councilwoman Chair.
Councilwoman Muscat?
Shouldn't that be in our 115 trust account?
No. The reason is that...
We asked her.
Well, I can answer it. It's not in there because of the fact that that was assigned years ago. And if we run into a year that we have a problem and need to make that contribution, that's kind of a reserve, an insurance policy, if you will, that we can make that commitment to the healthcare fund.
But at this point, you could use it for anything else.
Okay. At this point, let's have her answer because the question was directed at you.
So what's in the trust account for the OPEB plan is what you had planned out in accordance with your corrective action plan, which I believe you're still on track to do for 2020. That $2 million is just to show that of the reserves that you've built up, you're planning to set aside $2 million in case there's a situation where you would want to pre-fund over and above your corrective action plan funding.
The way that the accounting rules work is that council has discretion to assign or earmark funds, like you did in the two, not this body, but I think several years ago, the council. So there was a resolution that decided to set that $2 million aside. However, it was not, the resolution was not to put it into the trust. So based on the accounting rules, there's still discretion by this body to, in fact, reallocate that $2 million into the trust or to do something else with it if you chose. So because you still have discretion, you could pass a resolution, vote, whatever, the accounting rules do treat it as a discretionary amount.
My concern is that money then, even though we set it aside for healthcare, can be used any time for anything else, correct?
Yes.
At council discretion.
Well, that's not right.
And Madam Chair, if I may? I was on council when that was voted on. The 115 trust fund didn't exist at that time. Exactly. Which is why it wasn't put in there.
Exactly.
So therefore, this council body would need to come back behind and move that into that. And we could do that, which would be my recommendation.
Thank you for speaking.
Continue. Thank you.
Thanks. So slide eight, this graph shows the past six years of the Water and Sewer Fund's operating income compared to cash paid for capital items and debt. So operating income did increase there while your capital outlay and debt service expenses increased. And so infrastructure needs will continue to rise in the next few years. So it'll be important to consider this when setting those rates for next year. And then the last slide shows the unrestricted net position of the Water and Sewer Fund, which has been in a deficit for the past few years, mainly because the fund has significant investments in capital assets. But overall, the fund is operating very close to break even. This year, adding $200,000 to net position.
Thank you.
Did Michael ask you for some questions?
Yep. Were there any questions left? Any statements that we didn't cover?
Councilwoman Abella?
So I had a question actually for Alicia, if you don't mind. You mentioned earlier when you started, you said we could rely on these numbers. And that's great. Obviously, you've done your homework there. But then you said, you made a statement of, we've made a lot of progress, which is, that's a good sign. But that doesn't tell me where we're at. How far away are we? If you had to grade us hypothetically, to give us a perspective on this, if you had to grade us, as far as are we A level? Are we B, C? Where are we at? How far away are we? Because you can make progress, but still be way down here as far as where you're supposed to be.
So I commented on progress in two areas. One was relative to internal controls over financial reporting. And the other was the financial health of your general fund. So which item were you wanting me to expand on?
Both.
Sure. So I'll start with the general fund. So if you recall, if we go back to the slide that Nikki presented. Several years ago, I'm not telling anyone anything you don't already know, but Dearborn Heights was hit especially hard when there was an economic downturn and a significant decline in taxable value that you saw experienced here. And that hit your bottom line. There's no question about that. So what happened in those years is, I mean, you had no reserves. You had equated to our households, you had zero savings. You're living paycheck to paycheck. And so you had these negative numbers. So it took some time to recover from that and restabilize the budget, frankly, and kind of realign revenues and expenses. And so you can see just from what's happening with the fund balance that that has happened significantly. And so now today, rather than having zero savings, the city is at about 10% of unassigned or that 15% of assigned and unassigned, like Nikki said. So a lot of folks have kind of moved up that metric about what should that target percentage be? How much of your annual expenditures did you have? So we do hear some people saying, up to 30%. We're still saying, if you've got 15% to 20%, you're probably solid. So you're at 15%, 16%. That's solid. So relative to a balanced budget, being positioned for a rainy day, I mean, you're right there in the general fund. So I'd say, if I was just assessing your year-over-year health, you're probably at a B all day. Where you fall short is on investments in deferred capital and infrastructure and being able to continue to move the needle on funding, particularly your retiree healthcare. So you'd get a much lower grade there.
Okay. So that's, I'm sorry, just a follow-up question. So in the supplemental report, you gave us a federal awards supplemental information, June 30th, 2019 report. On the back of that, you had the summary of the audit results. And I just want to make sure this is the same thing that you've addressed there? Or if there's any additional information that we need to have? There was three items that were marked not too good, to be honest with you. I mean, one of them was material weakness identified, and you put yes. What are those material weaknesses?
Sure. So Nikki was actually just going to cover those.
Two more on there.
Sure. Can I allow her to walk through those?
Sure.
Maybe we can debrief on them?
Sure.
So one of the other deliverables that you have in front of you is the federal awards audit. So since the audit is performed under general auditing standards, we do include any findings that we have in this report. Under the federal audit, we did test CBPG this year. We had no findings. But we did have a few financial statement findings, like you mentioned. So if you want to turn to page four. I lied. Page nine.
Four, nine.
Nine. So the first finding, this is a repeat finding. And it's related to accounting entries that we would have identified as part of the audit. So like Alicia mentioned, we did see an overall decrease in the number of general entries that we did identify. Because when we start an audit, we would expect that everything is locked up. Everything's been reconciled to the GL, and it's ready for us to come in and look at. The entries that we did identify spanned across the corporate fund, Water and Sewer Fund, the full accrual Gesbe Fund, Tifa Fund, Drug Enforcement Fund, Library Fund, and the Major and Local Streets Fund. And so again, like Alicia mentioned, we know that you've had turnover in this department for the past few years. But we would continue to recommend that the focus really be on strengthening the controls in the comptroller's office.
So is there some concerns here? I mean, you just mentioned those funds, and that's great. But we're talking about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight funds that you have concerns about? That's concerning to me.
The entries, mostly entries that our team found were specifically the year-end closing audits.
Yes.
Just to clarify, that we're not finding issues in the day-to-day operations, cash receiving, cash disbursement, payroll. It's in the year-end accruals closing and what's happening at the end of the year. So that makes us feel better. I don't know how, I can't speak to how that makes you feel. But we would be more concerned and alarmed if we were saying, here's a problem with the day-to-day allocation of your finance department. We still want to see the year-end stuff tightened up. And we have seen some of that improve. We expect this list to get even smaller next year. So it seems to be going in the right direction if the kind of team keeps up with some of the things that have been put in place. But that, just to provide a little context.
Lee, Councilwoman Bazey?
So I know for the last two audits that I've been part of, I keep hearing the same thing. We have change in personnel. But I don't think there's an excuse for that here, since we have a mayor who's a CPA. And we keep having the same findings, which are related to a financial issue. So I don't think that's an excuse that we have new comptroller every few years, since we do have the same mayor who's a CPA. And we keep noting the same issues. The other thing here, I don't see any amounts. So when you say there's an issue, like say with water funds or funding going from one to the other, like for me, for example, I'd like to see an amount, not, I mean, this could be 10,000. It could be a million dollars. We don't know. We know there was an issue, and there's material weakness or something like that, or no documentation. But I'd like to see more of an example, one, like I said, of how much money are we talking about? And also, what type of material weakness are we talking about?
So not all the entries are like the question pad. There's several entries that are like book-only entries. So as an example, I'll give you an example. If you count them really funky, so let's say in your general fund, you purchase a truck, okay? It's an expensive general fund. The comptroller will say that in your government-wide statements, that's treated as an asset, like you would in a normal business. So there's a book-only entry to record that as an asset and a liability in your government-wide fund. It never affects your cash, doesn't affect your general fund. So that's probably half of these or those types of things. We would be happy to provide the details. Our industry, the ACBA, doesn't require us to detail that much. But we could list it out and share it with the council. The material weakness language is the language that is described for us. So there was enough in terms of the volume and the dollars, but it's the highest level of deficiency. That's what that means.
If I might, Madam Chair, I've had discussions with Martin relative to this. And I think the answer, in my opinion, and I think, and you may agree, I mean, Linda's doing a good job. But she needs, in my opinion, some additional training and assistance. And we found a source within Plant Moran to do that. And it's showing up positively this time. And hopefully, next year, it'll all go away.
Councilwoman Muscat?
On page 10, I see significant deficiencies. And these keep reoccurring. These are recurring things all the time. And how does someone stay, if it was a bill, how do you stay in business if you keep getting the same things? And you say you buy a truck. It's an asset. I understand it's an asset, but it still costs money. Money's got to come from somewhere. And I see a lot of, and even on page 11.
Councilwoman, let's stay on track, what page we're on.
Well, yeah. Well, it's both the same thing, page 10 and 11 here.
Are you going by findings?
Yes. I will actually reach findings.
Okay. I'm sorry.
If she covers it, they won't do it.
Yep. In the context portion of the finding, it does list out, like Alicia said, what the adjustments included. And we can certainly provide the dollar amount. But these are primarily book entries that are only needed at the end of the year in order to properly state the financial statements.
And, Madam Chair. And again, that's some of the stuff that we could bring it up at the council. I know Councilwoman Muscat, myself, and a few others have brought that issue when you have an invoice that is, let's say, referenced to the water fund. We know that entry shouldn't go to the water fund. So that's one of the questions. That's why I was raising a concern, that we'll look to see if there's an entry for something, like what the entry is, so we can relate it back to the invoices that some of us concur or not concur with.
During our audit, we didn't find any issues with funds paying for something and that not being charged to the correct fund in the testing that we did. But on the next finding, if you wanted to walk through that, this is related to, this is a repeat finding and relates to those allocations. So this has been repeated in years past. And it relates to the allocations made between the general fund and the Water and Sewer, indirect charges on construction code fees, annual fee paid to the police and fire fund, and then an annual fee paid to the library. The basis for these charges hasn't been reviewed in some years. And so our recommendation is that the basis for the allocations be revisited to ensure that you're not overcharging or undercharging another fund and that the basis is up to date.
Councilwoman Caston?
And for the mayor or Plant Moran, is the books all done now electronically? Is any of this on paper? Is it all electronic?
No. We don't get anything. The general ledger system is all electronic.
There are some components of the books and records that are sort of compiled at year-end outside of the system, like in Excel, you know, fix the assets, things like that. So there's a manual component to it. But manual today means Excel, you know, versus in the...
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bazey?
Again, I mean, that's a prime example, that one statement, a few sentences down from 2019-002 finding. An annual fee is charged to the police and fire pension trust fund for services provided by the corporate fund with no documented basis to support the amount charged. So something like that. I'd like to see what that amount is again.
I think it's a...
The amount is $35,000. The pension fund gives the city for administering the pension fund. So as you recall, prior controller, Mr. McCary, is helping out part-time administering the fund. So that would cover his salary, that would cover my work, that would cover the deputy treasurer's work, that would cover his liver's work, putting together the P9 tubes for the benefit calculations and for them keeping the payroll of what's determined for the pension system. So for, to operating the whole pension system, $35,000 is reasonable. That's what the pension board, like the city council, the pension board authorized to pay the city to provide those services to the board.
Thank you. Continue.
So the third finding is related to the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which is on page six of this report. That just lists out all of your federal expenditures for the year. And so along with the financial statement records, the expectation would be that the Sifa is complete and accurate at the time we start auditing. However, we did identify as part of the audit that $38,000 of federal forfeiture expenses were left off of the Sifa. And so that had to be added in order for it to be materially stated. So we would just recommend that a process be implemented in order to ensure that the Sifa is reconciled to the GL at the end of the year.
Councilwoman Abella?
So can you give me a little more information on something like that? So I mean, $38,000, that's a lot of money. So when you say something like that is left off, and I get it, there's probably eight billion numbers going back and forth all day at the city. But $38,000 is a pretty significant amount. So how was that dropped? And what actions are being put in place or recommended to the city? I presume that you meet with everybody personally to make recommendations. How does something like that get dropped and not get caught?
I can't answer why it wasn't caught on the review side of the city. But for our testing, we do reconcile the GL to the Sifa. But the audit firm can't be part of the city's internal controls.
So when you have a finding...
We've got...
So when you have a finding, and some is significant as that and some is, and I had honestly some concerns, too, because throughout here, you had, as we mentioned earlier, material weaknesses. I mean, these are words that scare me, honestly. Material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, non-compliance. They're not words that make me feel comfortable with what's going on over here. And I'm sure everybody's doing their best, no doubt about it. But with that being the case, if their best is not good enough, then do you make recommendations? Does the mayor make changes? Do you want us to make? I mean, obviously, it's not our forte accounting. But somebody's got to make some changes and to make sure these types of things don't happen. Or unless, I'm wrong, and this is fairly common in most cities, which I hope and imagine that that's not the case.
So just a little more context on this specific finding. On page six of that report here...
Can you go to the mic? Because I can't hear you.
Just a little more context on the finding that we're talking about, number three, on page 11. On page six of the report that we're looking at now is the schedule, which shows the total federal awards that were spent during the year. So federal dollars or awards you see that you actually spent during the year. That schedule omitted the $38,000. It was reported in the city's general ledger system. It was in your fund statements, it's in your financial reports. But the miss was getting it added to that schedule. So that was the issue. That particular schedule needs to include everything. And there was lapses in controls, which didn't pull that amount. But the reason we identified it is because it was correct in your general ledger system. So I just want to clarify that. So relative to where do you go with these type of findings? I mean, the best we can do is say, here's what we identified, and here's our recommendation. And then it really becomes a policy decision as to how you want to go about rectifying them. I will tell you, that is pretty common for us to have findings, like corrections. So we still would say that we'd like to see that number come down in terms of the entries identified. So we do still think there's area to keep improving on that. But as the mayor said, it was acknowledged that there was some additional assistance in development and training opportunities with the team. And so the mayor did take action to ask us to bring in some resources to help. And that's just happened in recent months.
So who's the go-to person then? I presume it's got to be the mayor, obviously. The go-to person's got to make corrective action on all these items.
I would think the mayor, in conjunction with the comptroller's office, would be working.
Yeah, and the first one, I feel, is additional training and, and assistance. The second item that was mentioned, that we will initiate studies during the year to better calibrate it, the inter-company charges. The third one, I, I'm drawing a blank on.
Okay, so the, the amount that didn't hit the CFA but hit the general ledger, it was a police vehicle that was bought. It was an accrual. So it was purchased before June 30th, was not paid for until after July, so when I gave them the initial CFA, it wasn't on there. I reached out to the departments that have federal funding to see if there was anything else that I should anticipate. They told me no, and I just, I'll have to do a better control on that. I just figured if they know what they're buying with their federal funds and what they're buying it. But I did notice that because it happened, it was actually paid for in August instead of June.
Councilman Basie?
Okay, so that's probably one of my concerns, the one that, which vehicle was that? Because I know that we allocate money for police vehicles, fire department vehicles, or other department vehicles. So which vehicle are we talking about? That's a lot of money, like I said, $38.
It's a police vehicle.
But which vehicle though?
I wouldn't know exactly which one it was, and if it was more than one, but they purchased it. It's federal forfeiture money that they used to buy those vehicles to police. So it was a vehicle that was purchased and received in June and didn't get paid for until after.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Thank you. Thank you, I thought you. Forgot we were here. I'm just playing. All right, so with the audit report, I mean, I have two things that really just come to me screaming. There's, I never like seeing deficiencies, especially when they're reoccurring, and I do appreciate attention to that, but I really want to hear on our OPEB, on our liabilities, our legacy cost. In particular, compliance with Public Act 202 from 2017, submission of Form 5572 to Michigan Treasury Department, and how funded are we? What are we looking at? I mean, we do have the 115 trust fund, which was something strongly advocated for, to get done in this, in our community, but, I mean, it is a concern, it's very concerning. So, you know, I want to hear something from you on this.
Sure. So what the, what the state is looking for all communities to target is being 30% funded over 30 years. So the city of Dearborn Heights has a ways to go, right? But you've taken the first step, which is good. You didn't, I mean, until this year, you didn't have a trust, and you had zero pre-funding. So the fact that you started the trust, that was the first right step. You've made an initial deposit, you've got to keep building on that, and your plan calls for you to keep funding that over time to work towards that target that the state has set out for you. So I do think it's important for the council to keep that top of mind as you're budgeting. You had some discussion about that earlier, and making sure that you're steadfast in continuing to work toward, you know, chipping away at putting some funding aside for that. But I would say kudos on taking the step to, to getting it going.
But we do have to have an action plan and a waiver, correct?
Yes.
Because the state has declared.
Yeah, and we presented an action plan, which I believe this body adopted and approved, and it was submitted to the state, and we complied with that.
And you will have to keep reporting annually.
Yes.
To verify that you're continuing to comply and you're making progress.
The other thing is, I'm looking at the water loss, and I know Director Selmin and I have met and talked about this, but the infrastructure liability that this community is going to incur is, in my mind, a mountain. I mean, we are looking at water loss has increased to 15% when it was 8% in 2018. I mean, that's significant for us, and it's costing everybody money, and we will see that in our water rates. You know, it's really unfortunate. So that's just a comment I want to share, because we've got, you know, water meters that need to be switched out, we've got infrastructure projects that are federally mandated besides the lead, leads in 175 homes?
Known.
Yeah, known homes. So these are some issues, and I tell you, I just keep putting the flag up on those issues because we really need to be planning this stuff out. I mean, we need to do some long-term visiting here. I'm talking five, 10, 15 years as a community, or else how are we going to be able to do this? We, we can't keep going to our residents asking for more and more money and taxing you. We need to be more responsible on the planning. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Continue.
Yes, Chair?
Yes.
If you look at Page 51 of the audit, it does, under subsequent bend, talks a little bit about how they explain about the Public Act 202 and the creation of the trust, and involves that. Just so you can see it and not.
I've got it. Yep, I have it, yes. Thank you, I saw it. Thank you, though. For others, maybe, you know, that'd be good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Continue.
So the last finding is related to procurement standards under the Uniform Grant Guidance, the new single audit rules. These rules were effective back in 2015, however, communities had the option of deferring one of the components, the new procurement standards, for three years. And so the city exercised that option to defer the new procurement standards. However, effective 7/1/18, that deferral period had ended, and there were specific requirements that should have been included in a new revised procurement policy. That was not updated by the city, and so as of 6/30/19, that procurement standard, that procurement policy wasn't in compliance with the Uniform Grant Guidance.
So they have to like a policy.
It's a policy. Yep.
Okay. Through the questions?
Going to turn it over to Alicia.
We have one more letter, but we'll take direction from you as to whether there's anything additional other than what Councilwoman Hicks pointed out in the final letter that you wanted us to cover. These are just legislative items, all the recommendations, but we've covered the four items already.
Okay. Councilwoman Wenzel?
You know, you said that you looked into the CDBG department. Is that the only department you actually looked into?
That's the only major program that we tested under, for federal awards.
Now, there's, there's issues with borrowing money from, like, say, the water department or buying things on the water department budget and being repaid. Do you guys look into that at all, see if those things are repaid?
Yes.
So to clarify, the CDBG is only related to the federal awards audit. We look at all the funds as part of the city's overall audit. And yes, and we've been doing actually even more testing on the allocations in the past years. We've expanded our scope, so Nikki can talk about those results.
Yeah, so I know the issue last year would have been with the inventory, as someone was not with the city for a certain amount of time under medical leave. And so we did revisit that this year and didn't find any instance where the water and sewer fund wouldn't have been repaid.
The only allocation issues we found are specifically listed on that one page that we covered in the finding.
Councilwoman Bella?
So for Nicole, I mean, the second time you've mentioned this, and you've mentioned that there's not been anything that's been borrowed from water and not been repaid, but yet we consistently, pretty consistently see that at most council meetings where there has been things charged to water, and then we've asked as a council, you know, we'd like to see, you know, that brought right back to the water and then show us proof of that. And I don't know about any of you guys, but I haven't personally seen it, to be honest with you, where it has been brought back. But then you, you're mentioning that you've never seen it. That kind of concerns me, because it's been happening on almost, it seems like almost every other meeting.
We audit on a sample basis. In our sample last year, we did find an issue that was rectified, and our sample this year, our expanded sample, we did not identify any issues. So it doesn't mean it didn't happen, it just means we didn't see it in what we tested, because it is on a sample basis. We do statistical sampling.
Okay, so question.
Don't look at everything.
So being that that's, okay, so you mentioned the sample didn't come up, and I could get that. I mean, I get that, let's say there's a thousand receipts, there's 20 like that, they may even not run across the same 20. But what if we asked right now to look into it a little bit further? Is that an option?
Yeah, we could scope out some, you could, we could do like an agreed-upon procedure or whatever you would, you would want, and where we could drill down and test as much as you wanted us to. Spend a day or a week or.
You can either do it now, or I do it before the audit, but when I have concerns about a particular department, I let them and keep them informed, and I will ask them to update and go more intensive in a particular area, and there's usually a reason for that, and I discuss that with them. And certainly, if the council's group feels that they want more effort done in a particular manner, all you need to do is tell them, and they will accomplish that.
Well, but to be fair, Mr. Mayor, we've had situations where there's been a charge of just whatever it happens to be, that had nothing to do with water, but that was charged to water, and then it's been brought up where there shouldn't have been charged to water, and then we've been told that there's going to be some corrective action, that we would see the receipts as proof that this has been done. And quite frankly, at least in my reference, unless you guys have others, I haven't seen it.
Well, here's, here's the key component, because when Mr. Selmin came aboard, and after a couple meetings, he got the flavor regarding this. And Mr. Selmin's been taking a very watchful eye, as has the controller and myself, in regards to the allocation of those particular things. And I think, I think we have it under control. Am I incorrect, or?
Yeah, you do, and I've been sending, since this new fiscal year, I did some last year, but I have sent the council inventory reports with every financial statements. The one report I did like six months in a row, where you can see, you see expenses and things, but you see every month that there's money going out of that inventory account, which means it's being allocated to the proper departments. So, and I've been providing you those reports since at least the beginning of this new fiscal year, sporadically in the prior, but now every time I prepare.
But Linda, it may be helpful, because they're not trained accountants, that we maybe have 15 minutes before a meeting, so that we, you take them through kind of what they're looking at, what they should be looking for, so they understand it, and that may be part of it.
I'm always available, and Dana in my office is the one that knows the allocations, which are provided from the DPW, and then John has been allocating them without the water fund paying, if they know specifically it's not water. If it's, you can't not allocate the gasoline. The gasoline goes into one tank, and then we bill each department. You can't take that bill and decide before they use it how much is going to go to this fund and that fund. So we do that allocation on a monthly basis.
But most of the time, though, it's been for things that have been clearly not water.
And now.
That's, that's ones that have been an issue, because, so in certain circumstances, you're going to have things that are going to be used by the water department and by hypothetically highway or whatever. I get that, on a, you know, a tank of gas, you can't split it up, so you just allocate. I get that. But there's been some, many incidences where it's been situations where it's been things that have been charged to water, and then some of us have brought, you know, issue with that, and then you're saying it's being allocated back, but then maybe on that exact allocation, maybe you could email us a copy, the allocation back, or like the mayor mentioned maybe in the beginning, bring them up specifically.
And you can.
Because when you get the financial report, as you are aware, and the mayor just mentioned, we are not accountants. I mean, you got.
Oh, that's fine.
8,000 ledgers in there, and so unless somebody points out specifically, this is the one that was spoken about at two council meetings ago, and here it is being allocated right back to water, then that would, you know, satisfy us all.
And I could, I could do that.
If you don't mind.
I would try to decide to value the fact that, yeah, these allocations are being done. If you want to get specific on one that you questioned, then I can point it out, and between John and Dana in my office, we'll watch for that particular invoice.
Thank you, Linda.
Councilman Muscat?
Page 12, Schedule of Findings and Questions Cost. How important is this, where we're not following CFR rules?
This is really just a compliance issue, so I think, so this has to do with your federal awards funding. I think what needs to not happen is that it keep repeating you over a year, because then, you know, you're granting agencies and say, okay, wait a minute, are you going to comply with the rules or not, right? Because they get these. So the, the council needs to look at your procurement policy, make some modifications so that you comply with the new requirements for what needs to be built into your procurement policy, adopt it, and this goes away. It's very simple to, to rectify this issue, so I would highly encourage, you know, the team to do that, and so that you don't have a recurring issue that the granting agencies take exception to.
You've done our audits for quite some number of years now.
Yes.
All the deficiencies we have here, how many are repeated year in and year out?
This is not a repeat finding, the one you just asked about. Number three is not a repeat finding. Number one and two are repeat findings.
And how long have they been going on?
I'd have to check. I feel like number two is two or three years now. The number one, the nature of the items we find changes year over year. It's not like we find the exact same errors year over year, but the concept of finding corrections that have to be made to materially correct your financial statements, that has recurred for several years.
And I think that we need to go over this, when we get budget time, is to go definitely line by line and kind of use this as a reference with what we've come up with to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Councilwoman Bella?
I'd just like to make a suggestion. Maybe this is too crazy, but instead of meeting every time at the end of the year after the audit, and I, I get that, we need to do that, but what about maybe on a quarterly basis, we start setting up something, I don't know if that can be done, where you guys come in, present to us, maybe in a study session, the findings that you've found so far, and this way we can make much quicker corrective action, instead of waiting until the end of the year to find out, well, it doesn't matter what's, it's too late. I mean, whatever corrective action you're going to do, it's too late for that particular year. Because, because it seems like, as long as I've been on the council, I've been hearing, you know, these, again, words that I don't like to hear, you know, weak, non-compliant, you know, significant findings, you know, it's not a finding, it's significant findings, you know. So is that an option at all? I mean, I don't know, mayor's administration can comment on that maybe, but I would love to see that, if it's at all possible.
So a couple of thoughts on that. One is that, you know, the scope of our audit is to audit your financial statements as of the end of the year. So it's not part of our engage, it's not part of a requirement for you to have us here all year doing testing. That would be outside of your audit. Most of what we're testing is the numbers as of 6/30 year-end. So that, that wouldn't work for our audit, because then we'd be doubling up on time and effort. However, if you wanted us to engage, you know, throughout the year, we, you, we could talk about structuring something that got us out here for maybe a few days, and, you know, maybe we could look at progress on prior things. It would be outside of the scope of our audit, but we could, you know, arrange something where we.
Well, that would work. Yeah, so if there's like 10 items that need to have corrective action.
Yeah, how it's coming along.
Let's not wait until December 2020 to find out that we haven't done it.
Right.
Instead, to hold everybody accountable.
But so we'd be happy to participate in that.
I would love to see it personally.
What that could look like.
I was going to say evaluation quarterly on how we're making progress.
Right. Councilman Basie?
If the council is agreeable, because for these allocations, we, we almost need an independent assessment as to the proper amount to charge and to take all the biases out, I'd like to utilize them to do those allocations between the funds.
Okay, Councilman Basie?
Okay, so I know I mentioned this before, I mean, I've done auditing for many years on, for different companies. So I mean, this, the stuff that I've been seeing here, the company will probably lose their certification on a lot of cases. So actually, what I'd like to see, instead of having you guys come and wasting more money, I'd like to see the administration, I mean, you would think that they will do like most cities or most corporations, do their own internal audit, especially with something like this. It's repeat findings, the year after year after year. And like I said, I've gone like almost 10 years, and there's a lot of repeat findings from six, seven years back. So what I'd like to see is that, see what the administration, before we approve the next budget, to see what the administration is going to do, one, an internal audit, to make sure that when Plant Moran comes for another audit, you know, we're not going to see, this is embarrassing, that we see the, the same repeat findings. So again, we shouldn't have to wait another year, next year we do the same thing, oh, we got another repeat findings. Okay, two of the three, or two of the whatever. I think there should be an internal audit, and I think the administration needs to provide us with something, what, what are they going to do, what tools they're going to put in place, so there's no more repeat findings, because this is, we keep seeing this over and over, and we keep approving the budget.
So that, that would be consistent with what we do see some other clients do.
But I don't have an internal audit staff in the city here.
Right.
I only have four employees.
You're the CPA, Mayor.
Councilman Conston?
But I'm correct in saying, or I'm not, so that would be something in addition to, separate from the year-end audit, that's, a lot of which is required by the state and different things, so some type of, you know, coaching, or, and that's something we could do internally or figure out a less expensive way to do that.
Right, so if you're going to do, do it internally, I mean, you know, certainly the team could provide updates, right, quarterly, monthly updates on status of the findings.[1759.62] Quarterly, monthly updates on status of the findings. Now, if you want an internal audit, you know, the mayor's correct, that's different, that's a significant time resource allocation matter. If you were asking us to come and provide quarter updates to give an independent opinion, that would be a challenge for us to do because we're not here all year, and we don't know what's happening until we come audit the books and records at year-end. But that's where we would say, if you want us to do that, we would need to be engaged to do some off-year-end testing and scope that out.
You handle other cities, I know, Plant Moran does.
Correct.
What do other cities do, if anything, in that regard that you know of, internal audits?
I would say, well, it's probably a combination. So it's a combination of folks that maybe have the team and resources to effectively deal with these things internally, and those who maybe don't, aren't quite there will engage us to come help correct some of the findings. And part of that, some of that has happened in recent months where the mayor reached out to Martin Olenek and said, hey, do you have some resources that can help our team with learning some of these things that we're having issues with so that we don't keep having repeat findings? So that's, that's new in, in recent months, but that, that has started.
And any idea what that would cost to come quarterly?
It would really depend on the scope. So it's all, it's a time and effort game, right? So it really depends, you know, how much the council wanted us to get, to dig into things. So it could be from like a few thousand dollars to more than that. I don't, you know, depends how much time we're spending here. You know, so we do offer a discounted rate. It's in our letter. I think it's probably 168 or something like that, but it, it just really comes down to time and materials, and so we'd have to talk about what that looked like.
Thank you.
Okay, any further question?
One comment.
Councilman Muscat?
Let's not forget, this is just a audit report, okay? They're given things and they test things, and so it's just an audit report. And when we go through the budget, maybe we could have one of them come sit with us so when we have questions to ask as we go line by line, it may help us. Because I have a gazillion questions here.
Yeah.
And we're not going to get through it tonight.
We would be happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to end our open study session.
What do you want to say?
Oh, public comment, I'm sorry. This time, I'm going to ask for public comment, limited to three minutes. Come on up to the microphone.
Wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
TMPU.
On page six, Accounts Payable.
Which, which?
The audit report.
Must be looking at a different report.
It's this report.
Report, the number's still seven.
Section two, as a recommendation and related information.
It's page, page six in the email that came in from the controller.
Yeah, I can read it. I can read it if you want. During the audit, we noted that various individuals in the controller's office have the ability to add new vendors to the system or payment without a secondary approval. I have seen this before in prior years. Can you assure us, the residents, that no new vendors were added, and they are not really supposed to be paid or anything like that happen?
We did not identify that during our audit.
What need to be done to make sure that there is no bogus vendors added to the system?
You should add another layer of controls. So if someone is going to have the ability to add a new vendor, then we would not be finalized until a second set of eyes sees it and operates the system. So dual controls.
So do you have any recommendation for the city council and the administration?
Yeah, I think we put it in here, we already mentioned silly, we mentioned dual controls, I guess we weren't clear a little bit, because there's a lot of different ways we can get at this.
Okay, can you, can you please provide them with a couple ways?
A simple answer to, who approves, who puts the vendors in now?
Okay, so in, in the controller's office, the purchasing, so Matthew...
So Matthew puts it in?
He creates a purchase order for a new vendor. He can.
Let's, let's have...
We've already discussed it, me and Martin discussed it, and we're going to limit the accounts payable ability to just Nikki, having that access to doing that, and anyone who wants to add a vendor will have to go through her. So I've got to work with that with the SNA's.
So there'll be two people would be needed.
Yeah, and right now, there is...
And that's what we want, is...
Because I have seen it previously, and it's repeated item. Now, the water loss, I do agree with Lisa. The loss is almost $1.3 million, if I'm not mistaken, annually. I would strongly recommend to the city council and the administration that we have five years planned to replace the old pipes and to see how we can reduce this, because this was 8% last year and it's back to 15%. That's lots of money to hack, you know, to the taxpayers in the city. I think there should be some kind of plan adopted and approved by the city council, and I believe in the long run, the cost is going to be less than the loss in the next five years. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
Hi, Dana Parrish. I just want to follow up with this gentleman's comment on the water loss. Obviously, we don't know where it's coming from directly, but I think one of the things that, that can be affecting it is we have contractors in the city, working in the city. We've had reports of trucks filling up their vehicles with water when they're working on projects. I don't know how true it is. When, when people are working on projects, they need to pay for water, just like I pay for water and everybody in this room pays for water. So if that's an issue, we need to make sure that there are controls in place to make sure that hydrants aren't just open. The only people that need to be opening hydrants are the gentleman over in the corner with the badges on. Those are the only gentlemen that are allowed to be opening up waters for free and putting fires out. Anybody else doesn't have that permission or that right. And this is, this is just an audit. Like the lady here said, it's not a deep dive, it's just all it is, is a statistical, excuse me, sampling. So it doesn't go into the deep numbers, and it doesn't go in to find exact, oh, how many one item or another was, was looked at. So if we need to look deeper, we need to look deeper. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe Hesch and Wilson Drive. Just from my experience, I'd like to talk about a couple of things about audits and what have you. There's many types of audits, there's compiled statements, there's bookkeeping statements, there's qualified statements and unqualified statements. The unqualified statements is the top of the line. It's the Cadillac of auditing. Once you get that, that means the auditors got everything they have requested. The city or the bank or the administration or the store did not offer any documents. They asked for whatever they wanted. That's what unqualified is. There is nothing above unqualified, just to let you know. And that's what the city did receive, and I thank them very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comment?
My name's Ed Prolick. I want to address the issue on the Plant Moran. I used to work for Garden City School, Public Schools, and they had Plant Moran there. And you know what happened to them? They're privatized right now. And I stated to them when, because the secretaries were in the union and I was in the union, I said, you're coming next. And they thought I was full of beans, and they're privatized too. And what was the charge? They dropped Plant Moran right after that because there was a lot of hanky panky going on between Plant Moran and superintendent of the Garden City School. So Superintendent Garden City School resigned after that, because he didn't want to face some charges, whatever, okay? But what I'm saying is, they privatized. You need to get independent, somebody else besides Plant Moran to check out what's going on here, okay? Because I don't trust Plant Moran. Amen.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay, at this time, I'd like to end our open study session.